Call the November 14th Planning Commission meeting to order. If everyone can introduce themselves, starting from my left.
Gary Casada.
Dan Godak.
Mayor Protem Charlamagne Douglas.
Mayor Mike Fournier.
Jeff Chase.
Joseph Murphy, Director of Planning.
All right, looks like we have a quorum. Second Order Business, approval of minutes for the October 10th, 2017 meeting. I do believe these were corrected yesterday online and they are available to view. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Ms. Douglas, support by Mr. Godak. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. All right, I'd like to open the public comment on non-agenda items. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak on non-agenda items, please step forward to the podium, give us your name and address, and about three to five minutes if you could, please.
My name is Stephen Schwegel, 607 East LaSalle Avenue, Royal Oak. Mr. Chase, I have copies of what I'm gonna present, if you don't mind giving it to you.
Sure.
So you can distribute them to the commission members if they choose to. On behalf of our church, so if you could give me an extra minute or two, I'd appreciate it.
Sure.
And this is Pastor Mike Walters. If you have any questions from our church, he's a little bit more knowledgeable on some of the subjects than I am, to give you a better answer if you do have any questions. Good evening, my name is Stephen Schwegel, and I am the President of the Council for Good Shepherd Lutheran Church, located at 814 North Campbell in Royal Oak. I spoke to you last month regarding our request for three variances for a replacement sign in front of our church. You turned down our request for an electronic messaging sign, but approved the other two variances. If it is my understanding that according to Robert's rules, a motion can be reconsidered, but only at the very next meeting. I'm here tonight with members of our congregation to respectfully request that you reconsider that motion to deny us a variance for an electronic sign. When I spoke last month, regretfully, we did not fully understand that the criteria for granting a variance depends on a demonstration of hardship. I'd like to correct that this evening by explaining the hardships that the church will suffer if the variance is still denied. First, our sign contractor has informed us that the current 23-year-old sign is functionally obsolete and therefore needs to be replaced rather than repaired. It is broken and deteriorating, and all the sign companies we spoke with will not guarantee a retrofit into the existing base, since almost all new signs these days tend to be electronic. It would be beyond our financial means to completely replace the sign base and foundation in addition to the sign itself for any other type of sign except an LED messaging sign as proposed that fits on the existing base. Even if we were able to replace it with a new manual lettering sign, given the distance from the road, the city easement landscaping and public sidewalk of Good Shepherd, sign company advice and experience has told us that there is no other type of sign that can be effectively seen by vehicle traffic other than an LED sign, even if the messages never change. The old sign was effective decades ago, when the road was narrower and traffic was slower, but that has changed. Second, it is important for you to understand a location issue that was not brought up the last time I spoke. You are aware that Good Shepherd is considered just outside of Area 2, yet the two major buildings on either side of us are inside Area 2 and allowed an LED messaging sign. The northern boundary of our parking lot goes right up to a business, Howie Glass. What I did not mention is that for years, we have been leasing a portion of our parking lot to Howie Glass for their customer parking, because they don't have adequate parking on their own property for employees and customers. I have the contract here if you need to see it. They pay us a rental fee each month and use our parking lot, which places us in a contract for commercial activity with the business in Area 2. For at least this very reason of leasing parking to a business in Area 2, we feel we should not be left out of Area 2 and should be allowed to have an LED messaging sign. Third, because the current sign is so old and deteriorating, it has become almost impossible for any member of our congregation to operate. The physical limitations of our mostly older church members means that we really can't change the current sign's manual lettering ourselves. Excuse me. The sign we have now has a large, heavy protective vandal shield that has to be unlocked, lifted up, and propped open to even begin altering the lettering, usually by a handyman. If we wanted to rotate messages, this would need to be done on a weekly basis, and that includes winter time and freezing temperatures. Because it is such a costly burden, it just never gets changed. A newer, non-electric sign would have the same burdensome features. A new electronic sign would eliminate this hardship. Fourth, the lack of effective signage could very well result in practical difficulties and/or hardships that go a lot deeper than mere inconvenience or monetary concern for the church. Our church hosts our Beacon of Hope Food Pantry, which provides supplementary food assistance to low-income citizens, including the elderly. The church belongs to TFAAP, the federally-funded Emergency Food Assistance Program, that helps supplement the diets of low-income Americans, including the elderly, by providing them with emergency food and nutrition assistance at no cost. TFAAP provides free food and administrative funds directly to our church. Our more recent food pantries have seen a significant drop in families, from about 100 families down to 30. If we fall below a certain number of participants, which we are close to doing, we will lose the external TFAAP subsidy aid, meaning no food pantry. Other churches in our region which provide these same types of services have seen a significant increase in participants with the installation of electronic signage. Many of the TFAAP clients have no access to the internet or cell phones or other communication methods and rely on visual messages such as signs for information. Good Shepherd serves a much larger regional community than just its Royal Oak congregation members. A new LED sign can allow us to get the word out to those families in need and to accomplish our mission of helping our community in this most important and life-saving way. We feel that the ordinance restrictions unreasonably prevent Good Shepherd from using our property in the way it has been intended, and that is to serve our community. Just like those businesses in Area 2 that are permitted to have electronic signs, we are severely restricted in communication. This is the way churches are heading, and we are merely asking for permission to keep up with the times. Royal Oak Church of Christ on Campbell and 11 Mile, Woodlawn Church on Rochester Road, St. John's Episcopal on 12 Mile in Woodward, First Congregational Church on Crooks Road, Unity on Crooks Road, Guardian Angels on 14 Mile Road, and scores of others in our neighboring communities. Madison Heights, Troy, Berkeley, and Clausen all have LED messaging signs. We are just asking to join them in reaching out to our community. As to another criteria for consideration of a variance, a new LED messaging sign would not alter the essential character of the area. The church is located both directly across the street and sandwiched in between commercial businesses in Area 2 that already have or are permitted to have an electronic sign. Any residential neighbors affected say they have no problem with the church putting in a new LED sign, as long as we are respectful. We have already submitted an affidavit signed by our pastor and myself stating that we will comply with all ordinance requirements as to the sign's operation. And if you check the Next Door Red Run, a website for neighborhoods to communicate with each other, area residents are mainly confused as to why we have been denied the new sign. It's important to understand that churches no longer just depend on their own congregations to sustain them. Just like commercial businesses that are permitted to have electronic signs, we need to reach out and be a part of the larger surrounding areas and do fundraising events to help with church costs. First Congregational Church on Crooks Road, for example, raises significant and essential funds through its annual rummage sale, which it announces on its LED sign, which draws shoppers from around the area. Without a messaging sign, this event would never raise the necessary funds that it does. It would be a financial hardship for Good Shepherd if we were to be denied the opportunity to fund our mission and operations through the use of an LED sign to send out our own messages. One more paragraph, thanks for bearing with me here. We feel a new sign would most certainly add class and modernization to a very old section of town, giving a stately 60-, 70-year-old church a much-needed facelift. With the community backing us, along with the commercial rental of our parking lot to our neighboring business, a functionally obsolete sign that is a hardship to change, the need to advertise our food pantry to maintain our government food subsidy, the fact that we cannot retrofit any other type of sign for all these reasons and more, we respectfully request that the Planning Commission, as the Sign Board of Appeals, reconsider its motion to deny us the variance for a new sign and grant the variance. And if there are any questions, we would be glad to answer them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. As far as I know, there are a few rules in order to reconsider a motion, so I'll let Mr. Murphy explain those to all so that everyone is on the same page, and then we can comment from there if we need to.
But we, I think we can go over those after the public comments close.
Okay.
Let's do that, and we can bring it back to the board, and if the board chooses to have a conversation with regard to that, then we can engage in conversation.
Mr. Casada?
Will we have a chance then to ask a question if we want to?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
If you have a seat. Is there anyone else that would like to comment on non-agenda items? All right, not seeing any. I can bring it back to this side of the table.
So the board has received a written request and confirmed verbally. If the board chooses to reconsider, there would need to be a motion made by one of the individuals that voted to deny the variance request. So those present today would be Commissioner Douglas, Mr. Godak, and Mr. Casada. So one of the three of you, after, if you so choose to engage in conversation and want to make a motion, it would need to be at least initiated by one of you that voted to deny the variance request. If the, if a motion to reconsider the request is approved tonight, then the petitioner would be able to file an application and come back in front of you at next month's meeting. It would be essentially heard as a new variance request.
Mr. Casada?
There was some comments about where variance 2 starts and stops. Can you explain that to us?
Can I suggest we continue with public comment?
Public comments.
Did you close it? Oh, I'm sorry.
There's no one else available.
So I would like to make a motion to add a discussion item about the Good Shepherd Church sign to the end of our agenda tonight.
A motion by Ms. Douglas to add it to discussion for, after the agenda?
Support.
Support by Mr. Fournier. All those, any discussion on the motion? Mr. Casada?
No, sounds good to me.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Can't look to my right anymore.
Makes it easier for you, Jeff.
All right. All right, it will be added to the end of the agenda after we're done with all of our other business. All right, moving on to old business. Item number one, zoning ordinance text amendments for preservation and replacement of existing trees. Mr. Murphy?
There was a lot of conversation and input from the Planning Commission last month, and unfortunately, the staff hasn't had time to craft any new language for you to review based on your comments. So I don't have anything new to present to you in writing. Certainly, if you have the interest in discussing it further, more than welcome to, and I can take additional comments, but I don't have anything new in writing. We're still working on that.
Any discussion on item number one? From last time? I apologize, I wasn't here, so. All right. No need to have a hearing for that as well, so item is closed. Item number two, SP 17-10-25, site plan to demolish existing restaurant, Tubby's Restaurant, and construct a five-unit, 6,500-square-foot commercial building for retail sales, carryout restaurants, and/or other permitted uses at 1612 East 11 Mile Road. Mr. Murphy?
This item was essentially postponed at last month's meeting to give the petitioner the opportunity, excuse me, to consider some site modifications, redesign of their site plan based on your comments. We've had very brief phone conversation with the petitioner. The petitioner has not submitted any revisions for you to review at this point in time.
Any discussion on the item? Mr. Godak?
Can we take action on it without having?
You do have the opportunity to do that, yes.
So we could put a motion into deny the site plan?
Yes, if they did want to come back with a different site plan, they would simply need to file a new application. There's no timeframe associated with how long they have to wait to submit for another site plan review.
Can I ask, did any of your phone conversations look like they were gonna submit at the next meeting? Was it moving forward?
No, they still seem to be inquiring on what direction you wanted. So we informed them that it would be in their best interest to watch the video once again to really gather your comments and come up with something new.
Thank you.
Mr. Casada, and then Ms. Douglas.
I, if recall, I voted against, or I was arguing against this project because the plans weren't properly sealed and there was a discussion, and there was also a very thoughtful memo put out by the Planning Department. Always good work by the Planning Department. However, I have a rebuttal, and my question is, should I also make a motion? I would make a motion to discuss that at the end, or I would simply suggest perhaps I can distribute my document, and if people have questions, they can talk to me about it. But my point is that I believe that we are required to deny approval of site plans that come in with those sorts of seals that are not the proper seal. So I'd be happy to distribute this and leave it at that, or if you want to talk about it afterwards, if there's any inclination to do that, or maybe do it next month, after people have a chance to look.
We can leave it to the end of the agenda if you'd like.
How about this, if there's any questions at the end, I'd like to move, we have a discussion at the end, if you have questions.
Ms. Douglas?
Yeah, I'm willing to give the applicant one more month, and so I'll make a motion to extend their postponement until the December meeting.
All right, we have a motion from Ms. Douglas. Any support?
Support it.
Supported by Mr. Fournier. All those, any discussion on the motion?
Just add, my sentiment was that, you know, they seem pretty open to our feedback and suggestions, and, you know, if they're that open to it, then, I mean, obviously, it's gonna take a little bit of time for them to, you know, get their wagon circled back again and get something in order, and I think granting another month isn't a big issue. But, that would be it.
Mr. Godak?
I think we're fairly clear on our comments last month about the setback issues. 11 Mile from Campbell to Maine has very low setbacks, and they were designing this site around focusing the sight of vision onto the gas station next door. That was the primary reason for setting the building back as far as it could go. They had no other good design reasons for doing that. So the setback was a big problem for me. Having a parking lot in front of a building in that section of 11 Mile just doesn't fit with the character, and we do have that type of criteria in one of the ordinances that Mr. Casada pointed out. So if they can figure that out and adjust their site plan accordingly, that's how I would reconsider it in a favorable manner.
Thank you.
Mr. Casada, would you like to hand that out and then let us read it for the next meeting when they apply again? Or come back, or do you want to?
Digest it. I'd like to take a look at it before I.
Let the record show, I'm passing out copies. I'd like to give a copy to our municipal council over here as well. And also, just for the fun of it, set these out in case anybody from the public is interested.
Is that proper?
Can I do that? Not sure, I've never been asked that question.
He would like to offer his draft document for public consideration. Is that cool?
Yes, the board votes on it.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Casada, any other discussion on the motion?
No, Mr. Chairman.
All right, so they will come back, the motion passed, and they will come back on the.
I think we voted.
Still need to vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can I have a vote on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. So we will see them next month, maybe if they choose, correct? All right. Onto item E, new business. Site plan 17-11-28, site plan to convert former antique store into holistic and naturopathic medical office with other services. Precision Wellness at 720 East 11 Mile Road. Mr. Murphy?
The petitioner is proposing to convert the convert the building which was utilized for retail sale of antiques and convert it to a holistic medical offices. They provided you with a floor plan that labels the use of the different portions of the interior of the building. They've also given you a plan of operation. One of the things that's noted in the plan of operation is that they intend to offer massage services, and that's an allowed use, as long as it's performed under the auspices of a licensed medical professional on staff at the site. And they've certainly noted that in their proposed plan of operation. So the site is accessed via a shared driveway and a shared aisleway off of East 11 Mile Road. There's a point to the site plan on the screen in front of you. There's a common driveway that services this property, as well as the property to the east. And you'll see it more clearly in this aerial photograph. The property line lies somewhere in this neighborhood, as shown on the site plan. One of the contingencies of approval, if the board chooses to move forward with approval, is that the petitioner provide a revised license agreement, easement agreement, for shared use of that aisleway, so that it's held in perpetuity, and it's recorded. It's with the current property owners, and it's recorded at Olton County. So it's something on record, so that there would never be an opportunity for someone to place any type of physical barrier or something in that aisleway that would prevent one party from accessing a portion of their property, or both from accessing their property. More recently, the petitioner has applied for a building permit to do interior and exterior demolition work. One of the items that they're demolishing, if you look on the aerial photograph, is a storage shed, storage building at the back corner of the property. And that frees up, if we look at the site plan, that'll free up area along the back for parking, and the shed is essentially in this area here. The petitioner has noted the correct number of parking spaces that meet the standards, the zoning ordinance standards. And for standard parking space, it's nine feet wide by 20 feet deep. We'll point out that this particular parking space falls slightly shy of that, so we can't count it towards a legitimate parking space. It's only eight feet wide. The petitioner's floor plan, based on the uses, and I'll refer to the floor plan on the screen. Based on this floor plan, the petitioner is required to provide 17 parking spaces, and the site plan accommodates for 15. So if the board does make a motion of approval, one of the contingencies would be the, that the petitioner obtain a variance from the number of, the minimum number of off-street parking spaces that are required.
Would that be a zoning board of appeals, or would that be done here?
No, that would be done at the zoning board of appeals, correct. We've been in conversation with the petitioner about modifications to the site plan. We've looked at some, it seems as though probably still gonna require a one or two-space variance. So you do see in the contingencies of approval here, number one, petitioner shall receive the appropriate number waiver of parking spaces, waiver for variance for one off-street parking space. I would just note the appropriate number of off-street parking spaces. So whatever floor plan the petitioner provides to us, site plan, will match them based on the number of parking spaces that's required per the use medical. The number of parking spaces that are provided, in this case 15. And if they fall short, we'll certainly process that to the zoning board of appeals for a variance request.
All right, any questions for Mr. Murphy?
Yes, we often at this table send people up to the zoning board for, you know, one or two-space variance. Sometimes they're bigger numbers, but often it's just, you know, we're off by one or two. How do those fare with the zoning board?
Well, they do view each on a case-by-case basis, as we always remind petitioners, every petitioner. They view each on a case-by-case basis, so they're gonna look at the hardship presented by the petitioner and the uniqueness of their particular plan of operation or the limitations of their site. Whatever factors that they determine that they would like to present to the board of appeals, the board's certainly willing to consider all of those, as well as the comments from those that receive public notice within 300 feet. So there is public comment provided by opportunity to provide public comment for each zoning board case. But the zoning board appeals has been very open-minded to all the variance requests, especially those related to off-street parking for commercial uses.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Murphy? This is not a public hearing, so is the petitioner in the audience? Yes, sir, Mr. Razor?
Yes. Hi, good evening. Jim Razor, 201 East Fourth, Royal Oak. Let me introduce Margaret Kamener.
How do you do?
And also her partner in this, Sonya Milatovitch. Did I do that right? I was a little close. On that, of course, our wonderful architect, Michael Gordon. This is just an absolutely wonderful plan for Royal Oak and for 11 Mile. It's always nice to see the vice chair. Mayor, Mayor Protem, and other commissioners. This is exactly what we're looking for in the reformat of 11 Mile Road. It wasn't that long ago that this was one of the worst areas of our city. Now we're up and coming with wonderful plans like this. It's an anti-aging medicine facility. I do have a write-up for you that I can show you. In essence, we're using a multimodal approach to anti-aging medicine, and on premises, there will be all sorts of things that people need to use, but in a holistic way. There's an MD or a DO overseeing the property, phlebotomist, holistic nutritionist, massage therapist, naturopaths, acupuncture. It's just a wonderful thing. And I don't know if you can see from the plans, but Michael will go into it, just how beautiful we're going to breathe life into this building. The owner of the building, who was a Royal Oak businessman for 30 years, is here if you have any questions of him. But we take this building and we turn it into just a beautiful, somewhat Asian-themed wellness center for Royal Oak. And it's just absolutely beautiful. So let me turn it over to Michael, and he can explain some comments. I would add, Joseph, we submitted some plans to reformat this parking, so we do have now nine spaces in the back, because that was just an error in terms of allocating the space. And we did redo the vestibule area, so we think we won't need any parking from zoning board. But certainly, that's something that Planning, I've been going back and forth with Mr. Hedges, that's something that we're gonna work on, because we need to get this up and running and get this construction started on the plan. So, Michael, take it away.
Well, just to address the parking issue, mathematically, across parking, there was 81 feet is the size of lot, so that's nine, nine foot space.
Front, perhaps, maybe.
Okay.
Is this good?
That's fine. That's okay.
So originally, we had a dumpster out back, and then through a management program, we decided that we were gonna have a dumpster, so that's what caused this sort of small space here. And then when we recalibrated, we said, well, we can get nine. There is 81 feet, there are nine foot spaces. So we do have a total of 16. Then we changed, working with Doug Hedges, and I want to thank him, we were going back and forth, and with allocating spaces in a different way and eliminating some of the storage, and there was a mezzanine, we believe the math now works that 16 spaces will be adequate and be recognized in code compliant. We, you know, we think this is gonna be a beautiful addition to the city. Again, everything we talk about, we're gonna use a lot of landscape in front, dog-friendly, bike-friendly. As a matter of fact, the doctor who's working here lives in Royal Oak and is within walking and biking distance of this facility. So it really wants to be a community-based, the business model's to really be community-based, partnering with other businesses, i.e. right across the street, the hotel. You know, that people can come and stay here and use this as a facility. And it is a wellness facility. Instead of treating long-term illnesses, trying to prevent illnesses and trying to maintain health with people. I'm very excited, and I will be participating, I'm very excited and I will be participating because as I age gracefully, I need all the help I can get. So and then the exterior, you can see the before and after. Work is, like we said, they're ready to permit because under we can do some of the remodeling under just maintenance of the building. It'll be painted. Unfortunately, the printer, the color is already there, it's a brighter orange than this with teal. And then this this sort of striking element in front, which we try to give it this sort of zen feeling and really announce the entry and make a little bit more presence on the street. The sign that exists will be code complying, we're going to shorten it, we're going to fix it. So everything we've done, everything else, working with Doug, we've tried to make sure that we're in compliance. And I'm sure I'll see you all there.
There, Michael, where you conclude with your comments?
Yes.
There were two things, though, about the sign, so. Sure, so first of all, planning wanted us, and Joseph, I don't know if this is something you can do at this table, but we had planned wellness artwork, not signage, but just pictures of healthy young people having fun down the entire exposure of this building. We thought it would bring some public art to the eleven mile corridor. We thought it would really liven up this exposure of brick. Planning considered it to be a sign, even though it's not going to have the name of the facility on it. I don't know if this board could decide whether or not it was public art versus a sign, but it would be our druthers that we could do some beautiful public art on the side that was about wellness and about activity, but not necessarily about this facility, which we thought would be very nice. Also, there's a there's an expense to redoing the old sign. There the old sign is a couple of feet taller than what we allow.
Ten inches.
Ten inches taller. So if this board can grant some sort of practical hardship from that, it's a lot of expense to retrofit this sign for eleven inches. Sometimes eleven inches is a lot. In this case, I don't think it does anything, it's been there for thirty years. I don't think it's ever caused a problem. And certainly, if this board could do something. With that, it would be interesting. What I should tell you also is that in terms of the professionals that this is bringing to the city, I've known Margaret for some time. She's already in the medical business, she has a company IT works. They have saved Michigan's largest workers' comp insurer something in the lines of fifteen million dollars through their innovative holistic way of looking at these comp cases and getting people back to work. Sonia has an MBA. She also has a master's, both from Europe, and here she speaks four languages. She owns a great deal of companies. She brings a lot of operational expertise to this operation. So I just think it's a slam dunk for eleven mile. Do you have some literature that she can look at in terms of purpose? Of it, if you can consider the signage issues as part of this, Joseph, I don't know if you can do that. The thing also that I I point out, just in terms of one-stop shopping, and I know we can't do this for this, if we have variances to grant for parking, then they have to go to ZBA. But in terms of this, you're not really going to have seventeen people in this building at one time. It wouldn't fit it, you couldn't handle it. We may want to consider some way of the planning commission in terms of approval of these to look at the staging of parking and come up with a zoning ordinance that's more flexible with that. But certainly nothing we can do today in terms of that, and we'll deal with it the way that it is. The other thing I'd mention is, is that although we're changing the use of this from antique store to a medical, in the neighborhood zone, both of those are allowable uses. So although they want, the city would like us to do site plan approval for the new use, they're both allowable uses in the neighborhood zone. So the zoning is appropriate for this use. Massage was mentioned. Fortunately, this isn't the nineteen nineties and this is medical massage under the licensing of a D.O. or an M.D. for for folks, so nothing, nothing to see there. I I'm happy to answer any questions. My folks are happy to answer any questions, just new business owners coming to town looking to do business here in Royal Oak, and I I think they'll be very successful.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Questions from the board for Mr. Razor or the petitioners?
Actually, just an observation, the the city commission last night approved a plan to update and to completely redo our master plan. And certainly, parking in commercial areas is a subject that would be addressed in the master plan, and I look forward to your participation in it, Mr. Razor.
Thank you, I'd be happy to be helpful.
Any other questions?
That wasn't a question, but.
Mr. Goddick?
I guess I'm mildly confused about some of the conditions that planning department listed out, the one through nine contingencies. I'm just a little confused on do do, is sixteen enough or are you satisfied with what presented here tonight or do we still need to recommend a variance to zoning? I'm just not clear on that one yet.
Sure, I would keep your contingency, the suggested contingency that the petitioner received the appropriate waiver of variance from the required minimum number of off-street parking spaces. We'll work with the petitioner to look at their drawings in in detail to see if, in fact, that's something those revisions do accommodate one additional parking space onsite as well as reduce the amount of parking that's required based on a modification of usable floor area on their floor plan. I would just keep it. So if it's necessary at some point, when they submit for building permits, it's a different floor plan, we'll say, well, that's a contingency. If the floor plan and the site plan is modified to comply, we'll know that that's not applicable because they would meet the minimums.
I guess my, that's a good answer, thank you. My other confusion is the signage. It started with the architect saying they're going to comply and Mr. Razor talked about getting a variance for the ten inches of height. So I guess we have to talk about signage and also the the recommendation or request for having pictures of healthy, happy people on the side of the building. Whether that, do you have an opinion on whether that's criteria for signage versus art?
I would have to get a get a copy of all those items that are proposed and pass that on to the building office, to the deputy building director. He's the one that administers the sign ordinance in terms of reviewing applications for signage and issuing permits. So he reviews that on a regular, on a daily basis, he would know those off the top of his head. I will state that Mr. Razor asked if the planning commission was capable of granting a waiver from the height requirement. You, in fact, are, if they make a separate application under the sign ordinance requirements. Since it's entirely separate ordinance, it's a separate application for a variance request. So we can certainly look at what's ever proposed for the pole sign.
Maybe some language in the approval that a contingency for filing that so that that condition, I think that's condition. These are conditions eight, seven and eight. I'm sorry, just eight. Eight is about the wall sign, which is this, we initially had two or three signs, but they count the area between the signs. So we couldn't do two or three signs to kind of art, sorry, you're right. We couldn't do art to include the whole side facade of that building, which is really kind of a shame because you're looking at a brick wall. So I guess, Joseph, maybe if the board could give us some guidance, or you could give us some guidance, and we'd be more than happy to to re-present that. And certainly, in talking about this sign, so this is the sign that's been there for thirty years. And if you want us to have a contingency for resubmitting just for the modification of that, we can certainly do that. It's eleven inches too tall.
Yeah, just, I I mean, regarding the the proposed art, I don't think that is being a bad idea, but my understanding is that we would, I know we had one of these previously, we went through the arts commission first, and then it came back here to planning as a recommendation, recommendation from the arts commission, am I correct? That way, we have our, you know, folks that are charged with finding, you know, permitting and encouraging great art in the community can give us an opinion. I can do stick figures, but, you know, I really trust their opinion on what art is, so I think that's one bit of advice we can give you is that, you know, if you go through that process, then it can get back. There's a whole lot of, I'm sure Mr. Razor can give you a whole explanation about the recent Supreme Court ruling on signage and the difficulty it has determining whether something is art or not, but that might cost you a lot per hour because he can explain it in great detail.
Well, thank you for that.
He's very well versed in his services.
I appreciate that. We'll, we'll certainly work with the arts commission on that. Margaret reminded me that they've also been working with the DIA about leasable or replaceable art from the DIA for that wall. So, yeah, that's great. We'd be happy to move forward with that.
Mr. Casada?
Well, I just have a couple of comments. I would say that, yes, I would be uncomfortable being too specific with a contingency without knowing what was planned. So I, if there's going to be a sign or an art request, certainly I would like to see what is going to be put there.
Absolutely.
And the other thing is a comment for for Michael. You're adding a sculptural element to the front of the entrance there, right? So you got a sculptural element and then you got the sign sitting there. I don't know how that balances, how much you you, what you think about that. Plus, if it's a zen theme, you're going to have a point of focus, you're going to have a sign, and you're going to have artwork. It's a design issue for you to deal with. I bring it up, you've probably thought of it yourself. I wonder if that old thirty-year-old sign even needs to be there if you have a sculptural element at your entrance.
Well, I think every business needs to have a, every business needs to have a sign. And what you're not appreciating is what we're going to design for the sign. We're working with, yeah, we're working with the logo, we're working with the marketing and company. And actually, the elements of those reinforce the logo, so there is a tie-in.
Okay, well, we'll look forward to seeing that.
And the money we're spending on taking eleven inches off the sign could make it cooler and more harmonious. You know, in a nutshell, you know, it could be very zen-like by the time it's done, but if you're dealing with, you know, cutting off a little bit of the top of that thing and all like that, you know, there's there's only so many dollars to to do it. I just think it it seems like it's very de minimis. So, Joseph, you want us to do a new application for a variance on that or as part of this application, or how would you like us to do that?
You would need to file for a sign permit through the building office, and then they would review it for compliance. They would determine how it, if it does or does not comply. And if it does not comply, then they would write you a letter indicating exactly how it didn't comply. At that point in time, you could file an application for an appeal to the sign ordinance requirements from the planning commission.
Okay.
Yeah, I will say that the language that we use here, all signs shall comply with certain requirements where we see necessary. That's the common contingency of every single site plan that comes in front of us, so it's not like we're calling you out specifically.
Any other comments?
I understand, so we can modify it or come back. Yeah, I understand. I think also, Joseph, plan of operation, we've already submitted that by letter, so I think that that's satisfied.
It's just indicating that we're holding you to it.
Okay. Fine. I think everything else is great.
Any other comments for the petitioners?
I I would just like to say I like the plan, I think it's a good use of the space as well. The revitalization of eleven mile is is getting better, and I think this will add to it. I would like to see the signage and the artwork and everything before that would be approved, however, but looks great so far. So with that, I will call for a motion.
Mr. Goddick?
I'd like to move the site plan SP seventeen eleven twenty-eight with the stated contingencies.
Motion by Mr. Goddick. Support. Ms. Douglas, support. Any discussion on the motion?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I'd just like to echo, you know, what's already been said, I think this is a great fit. This is right in my backyard, almost literally. And I think that hopefully in many years, probably like two. No, I think when it comes to preventative health, we've talked a lot about aging in place, we've talked a lot about things we can do from, you know, the municipal side, but it is going to take the help of, you know, entrepreneurs like yourself to provide the services that folks are going to need at any age, but in particular, when we start thinking about when we age. So overall, I'm not too concerned, I think you guys are going to figure out how to do the parking, and even if, you know, you can't, I'm still good with making that recommendation to to the zoning, so the ZBA. So I wish you the best of luck, and I welcome you to Royal Oak, and I think you're going to be really successful, so it's a good fit.
Could I ask a question, Joseph, about the motion, sorry? So in terms of financing, they require a letter for a site plan approval from the city that that our site plan's been approved. Would that be, would the site plan be approved as of the next meeting, or could we do this for immediate effects so I can get a letter from you saying that we have site plan approval so they can get their funding from the bank and start construction immediately?
Yep, usually the next day, so tomorrow or the day after, we would provide a a letter indicating the board's motion, so we'd send that to you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
All righty, we have a motion supported by Ms. Douglas. Is there a vote, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All of us opposed, no one else is here. Motion passes. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, congratulations.
So much for your consideration.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would we fit in the reconsideration, or would we go through the?
We can just go through.
All right. The next item, other business, City of Claussen, master plan update?
Mm-hmm. Claussen is updating their master plan.
Thank you, Claussen.
Good job, Mr. Murphy. Ahead of us. So we just get notice, they're required to provide notice under state law.
All right. And since we moved my, an item up here for the last portion of the evening, we can discuss the reconsideration of, I don't have a number here, but the sign variance, I believe it is. All right. And we discuss up here, correct? All right, discussion from the board?
Well, I'd like to make a motion to reconsider the decision from our last meeting and propose that Good Shepherd Church come back to us at our December meeting, making the case for hardship, which they did in public comment tonight, but that's not part of the official record. So we need them to come back and 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 make that case. I don't, so I'll stop there.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
That is a motion, supported by Ms. Mayor Fornier. Any discussion on the motion?
Yes.
Mr. Goddick?
It was a thorough description of of what transpired from the church's viewpoint, and I appreciate that level of detail. One question, I guess, for planning or legal, they presented a lease to an adjacent building owner to pull them into area two. Does does that have any merit at all? That kind of?
Not in tonight's discussion, I would say tonight's discussion should be exclusively based on whether the board wants to reconsider their request and have them come provide, even though they already gave you a lot of details, to come back and give you everything to convince you otherwise.
I was trying to give them a little bit of feedback about what was presented tonight. I I understand this motion is just for a reconsideration, but I guess this is probably the only time I'm going to have to speak on the subject prior to that, so if you don't want to give opinion at that time, it's something before the next meeting, if you could opine on that.
Go ahead and mention it one more time. I'm sorry.
The petitioner presented a lease with a adjacent building owner to to make the case that this would, since the adjacent building owner is in area two, that because they're leasing a portion of their property to a building, area two owner, that this would would pull them into that area. And it sounds like a stretch to me, and I just don't know how.
Sure, the sign, the sign area maps, which are designated by the sign ordinance, are property-specific or boundary-specific. So they wouldn't, we wouldn't have any gray area. If you look at the map, there's a hard line between which properties and which sign area versus another. Obviously, they're presenting that information to you to assist you in your decision-making, but we don't see it that way whatsoever. There's a hard line between the properties. One is in one district, one is in another.
And the last comment I'll make in general terms is when we struggled with this last month's meeting, at least I did, I was very conflicted that it's not any reflection on the church's good work. It's the fact that we don't have any tools in our bucket to look at content. So what this board has been consistent in, especially recently, is to comply, comply, comply. The variances are Uh, the variances are, uh, consistently handed out, uh, recently, and there were three con, uh, um, variances as part of this, there was a setback that was ten feet, that was, uh, waived as part of this, and, and another one that was waived, so you got two out of three. I, I'm, uh, unswayed at this point, you know, even with all the verbiage here that electronic sign is a good thing, given the other two variances, so, uh, you know, bringing an electronic sign that close to the road, because, you know, we're, we did waive, uh, the setback considerably, would be a stretch for me, so it's, if you gotta have the electric sign, move it back off the road, but to have all three variances, it's gonna be a tough one to swallow all three from my standpoint, so that's just the feedback I wanted to give. Thanks for listening as part of that discussion for this motion.
Mr. Casada?
Yeah, I, this is a, a question for, for, for Joe, okay, so I looked at the zoning map, and indeed, the corner Howie's there, and the, the four corners are all neighborhood businesses, that's, that's sign area two, that's what that means?
No, they're two separate ordinances, so they have entirely different references. The sign area map is specific to the sign ordinance, it has no relationship whatsoever to the zoning ordinance or zoning districts.
Okay, can you tell me off the top of your head where sign area two is relative to the church?
I couldn't tell you that off the top of my head.
Okay, then I can't make much decision about that, what I heard from the petitioner was that they were right next to the sign area two, so, but they didn't present a map, so I don't have that. Uh, they also said, and I, can I direct this question to them? You also said that there were other LED signs, where are those LED signs?
Next month.
That's next month?
Next month's discussion, yeah, this is just to reopen it so that they can come back, and then I'm sure we'll have this same discussion about all these items, I would imagine.
Well, it would bear on my vote whether or not what they said was true.
What they said in here was true?
Yeah, what, what they just told us, that's why I'm, I'm asking, I wanted to ask them, is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
Where are the LED signs you're talking about? You said there, that you said you were right next to Area Two, and there were other LED signs, which, which, which?
The closest LED sign that I'm familiar with without driving up and down the, the whole area, which I've done, is the church on Eleven Mile, but there are several buildings within a stone's throw that are in Area Two, including Howie's Glass, which butts our parking lot, they can have a sign. Most of these businesses probably will never petition for a sign, they just, I just don't see them having the need to spend that kind of money for their, the types of business that are adjacent to us. But what I'm confused as is why Howie Glass can have one, we can't, and then there's a church one block down that can have one, based on the signage.
Perhaps that would confuse me, you're not saying that Howie Glass has an LED sign?
No, no.
Okay.
No, no. To my, not, to be specific, just thinking off the top of my head, between eleven and twelve, we would be the only ones with an LED sign.
Okay, thank you.
Other than up to Eleven Mile, the church on Eleven, and, and Campbell has one right now from previous, not, it's not a recent sign, so we would just be adding a nice feature to that area of the city.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Alrighty, I'll call for, oh, I'm sorry, you did have your hand up.
Yes, so in their document here, they say that, uh, Good Shepherd is, says that the two major buildings on either side are inside Area Two, and yet, as I look at the sign ordinance map, that does not appear to be the case, only the property just north of them, Howie Glass, is in sign area two, and everything south of them is residential or is, is not a sign area at all. So, I, I'd like to be sure that that is indeed the case, and then just ask the question, what are the, what is the process for changing the sign, the, a sign area or re-zoning or reclassifying it as a sign area one or two or whatever?
Certainly, the City Commission, as you know, recently did the amendments, City Commission is the body that does make amendments to the sign ordinance. The planning commission could make a recommendation to the City Commission, or the City Commission could just consider it outright.
Okay, and, and am I correct in my, is, is the sign, is the map correct, and that the only sign or zone two is to their north and not to their south?
Yes, if it's the, if it's the sign area, sign area map online, that was updated based on the State Commission.
Okay.
So, as, as you recall, there was a lot of conversation and debate with regard to existing digital, whatever the term is, digital message signs, electronic signs, and they're ones that exist, and the thought of those in the future, so a lot of those sign areas did change based on what has happened and the direction that City Commission wanted to proceed with in terms of allowing them for the future. So, some of those, some of those areas maybe previously did allow for it, some other religious institutions that they're referring to, and now they're no longer in an area that would allow that.
Right.
So, there, there were some deliberate reasons for changes of sign areas.
But, that doesn't affect this sign area, it's just others, they were A, now they're B. Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Mr. Casada?
Just really quick, whatever we do here, I think you're doing great work, we appreciate it, keep doing it, thank you.
Alright, I will call for a vote on the motion, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, sorry. All those opposed? None? Alright, motion to reconsider passes, and I guess they can resubmit, is that right?
Mm-hmm, can we contact with our office, so, and we can get you an application and set you up for next month?
Thank you.
Yeah, that seemed cool.
I didn't hear you guys say, I didn't hear you guys say.
My wife's the biggest Spartan fan on earth, there absolutely is.
That's why I looked, I was like, did they hear everybody?
Go Green!
Go White!
Did we move any other agenda items to the bottom?
Thank you for your consideration.
Have a great night.
Alright, is there any other topics of discussion that we have? I think we were good, right? Alright, uh, look for the mystery vote.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion, motion by Mr. Goddick?
Second.
Second by Mr. Casada, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? And that is it.
It's the fastest meeting we've ever.